All right, welcome everyone. I'm gonna open the meeting tonight. Welcome to the Grand Forks City Council Meeting tonight, August 15th, Monday at 5:30 here in Council Chambers. I'm gonna start with roll call. Weigel?
Here.
Ososki?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Lunskey?
Here.
Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
And Veen?
Here.
Six present, we have a quorum. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Feeland.
Good evening. We have a unique circumstance. We don't have the mayor, the president, or the vice president of City Council to lead the meeting this evening, so per Robert's Rules of Order, the council needs to vote on a chairperson. I have in advance that. I did confer with the leadership and I did have preliminary meetings with Councilmember Weigel regarding the agenda. And with your vote of approval, we would ask that Councilmember Weigel lead the meeting this evening in advance. But we'll need a vote on that for you to move forward. So that's our recommendation that's in front of you this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Mr. Weigel to run the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Mr. Weigel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. I have none. Move on to item number two.
And there are none.
Perfect. Item number three?
3.1 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance and final approval of the request to amend zoning map to approve Mar pud concept development plan. Plan Amendment 2 and to include all of my fifth edition located at 2200 South 42nd Street.
All right, I'll open a public hearing on item 3.1. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on item 3.1? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing on 3.1. Is there a motion or any discussion?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 3.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance and Final Approval of the Request to Amend Chapter 18 Land Development Code, amending section 18-0301, Subsection 3 relating to off-premise signs specifically South Washington Street.
I'll open a public hearing on item 3.2. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on item 3.2? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on 3.2. Council discussion or motions? Moved by Veen. Second by Lunskey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 3.3, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance to Amend Chapter 18 Land Development Code, amending section 18-0301 relating to high school ground monument signs.
I'll open a public hearing on item 3.3. Is there anybody looking to speak on item 3.3? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any council discussion or motions?
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item four is our action items. I will poll 4.1, 4.2, and 410. Is there any other items people would like polled? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can read off the ones that we would be approving. 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.11, 4.12, and 413.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Then 4.1 is application for electric scooter permit from Bird Scooters. The City Council recently approved an ordinance establishing permitting process for operations of business to offer electric scooter rental within the community. Attached is the application submitted by Bird Riders Incorporated. As part of the licensing process, applicants submit application and supporting information relating to their proposed operation and this application is attached. Needs to be received and reviewed and approved by City Council. Mr. Cavado, I believe, is in attendance virtually if you have any questions with the application, but tonight what we would look to is approval of the attached application.
Thank you, Ms. Thorstedt. Any council discussion? Is there a motion? Moved by Veen. Second by Lunskey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 4.2 is amendment to letter of intent for downtown street fair to include city pocket parks.
Good evening, City Council. This is basically a housekeeping. We've already approved the co-mingling for alcohol for this weekend's Downtown Development Association Street Fair. This is to allow them to also have the pocket parks to be able to consume alcohol as they pass through to look at different art.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavami?
Is this something that we've done in the past?
Well, we've done pocket parks, but we may not have had co-mingling going through them as much before.
Sure, okay.
It's just a housekeeping.
True.
Move approval.
Moved by Cavami. Is there a second?
Or second by Ms. Ososki?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 4.10 is the City Meeting Management Discussion and attaches the draft citizen comment policy.
Thank you, Ms. Thorstedt. Mr. Gostad?
Sure. There was a citizen comment guideline and policy that was part of the packet. I'll just briefly go through the provisions of it. What it's intended to do is memorialize the authority of the presiding officers at City Council meetings, to memorialize actually the existing authority that it has. The couple of items, one is the placement of citizen comments, as I understand, will be moved up on the agenda to the spot where it'll be after the awards, presentations, appointments, and pro commissions, and before public hearings are action items. I think it would become item three on the agenda then. Public comments under the guideline, as was discussed last week, would be during City Council meetings. It would not cover committee of the whole meetings or special meetings. However, there's an exception. If there is a requirement for a public hearing, then those, you know, the public comment guideline that we're talking about wouldn't necessarily apply to those public hearings or wouldn't apply to presenters on agenda items as well. The one change that was discussed was to increase the time limit from three minutes to five minutes. There would be no sharing of time from one speaker to the next during public comment. If you use your five minutes, you use them, but if you don't use all your five, you can't give them to somebody else. There was discussion about a page limit as far as written statements to two and a half pages. The other discussion procedurally, that somebody that wants to speak during the public comment period would have to, before the meeting starts, submit their name, address, and the subject matter they want to speak to. There wouldn't be any late submissions. People that submit late wouldn't be permitted to comment during the public comment period for that particular meeting. And if you don't sign up, there won't be a public comment to just walk up before, like we've done, it's occurred before. It also talks about disruptive behavior that the presiding officer would provide a warning. And if it continues, then the council may go into recess until the disruptive behavior could stop. Of course, if the conduct was severe enough, the presiding officer could ask for immediate removal of the individual. There's also provision at the bottom, and this wasn't necessarily discussed, but it was something that was brought to the attention of my office during a department head meeting about people walking up to the dais during meetings. And just kind of a reminder that there already is an ordinance on that with respect to people coming up on the dais during meetings. It's, you're not supposed to, you're not allowed to do so under existing ordinances. So that's, in a nutshell, the guideline and the policy, and I think, as I understood, to have the council approve this type of guidelines so that going forward, the presiding officer has some guidance as to how to handle meeting management. So if you have any questions for me, Mr. Quinn is also here because he did the laboring and looking at some of the First Amendment issues. So if you had any questions for him, he'd certainly, or me, would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Any council comments at this time? Ms. Ososki?
So, the things that are changing are the time limit and moving the time slot up, correct? Are those, I mean, has all of this been in the previous ordinance or whatever before? Because I thought that these were just things that, you know, we were able to enforce already.
You're right. The only change that exists is to increase the time period for public comment and then just to change the placement of where public comment would occur. All of these items that are in the guideline are items that the presiding officer already had the inherent authority to execute if he needed to, he or she needed to.
Thank you. Ms. Lunskey?
Are we going to cut people off at the three minutes? We had talked about like shutting off the microphone at three or five minutes, whichever we agree to.
That's not part of the guideline, but as I understand, there's gonna be a mechanism, there'll be a timing mechanism that is gonna be placed so that the person that's speaking will be able to see it and the person controlling, leading will be able to see it. As far as shutting down the microphone, that's certainly a possibility, but bear in mind that if that happens, if somebody goes beyond the time limitation, that would be disruptive behavior because you're now taking away somebody else's ability to speak. And the presiding officer can give a warning and then you can go into recess at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weigel. So, to repeat, Grand Forks has one of the most open, transparent processes for citizens' comment in the state. All that we're doing right now is actually expanding the amount of time that people have from three minutes to five minutes. So I'm in favor of this and I'll move approval. I do have one question though. Well, I'll move approval, then I'll come back to my question.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. We do have a motion to approve this policy. Is there a second? Mr. Cavami seconds. Mr. Weber?
Yes, as far as individuals approaching the dais, in my experience, the vast majority of the time that people approach the dais, it's simply to give us information. What is the process for them sharing that information now?
If, if an individual, they should ask permission of the presiding officer to be able to approach the dais.
Very good, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Cavami?
I, you know, I appreciate moving the comments forward, but I also would be curious to hear feedback, maybe tonight, on would the, would the public at large prefer the comments at the end? So I like that we're trying this and that this is a path forward, and then if we hear overwhelming, you know, outcry that we prefer it at the end, I could very easily be persuaded to ask for this to be changed back.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Veen?
And I would concur. I'd be anxious to hear what others have to say too.
I don't disagree with you. I think that some people are gonna prefer it at the beginning. I think some people are gonna prefer it at the end. Maybe it's something that we try out, and if we do get feedback where people prefer it at the end of a meeting versus the beginning of the meeting, then I think it's our own policy. We can easily go back to what others would like, so. But we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five?
5.1, Portfolio Management Summary as of July 31st. And 5.2 is a statement of changes in cash balances as of June 30th.
Thank you. Item number six, citizen comments. Yeah, I'll take the cards. I apologize if I get the last name wrong, but I think it's Jason Pastrick. Sorry. Bad at reading handwriting. You and me both.
Okay, just to make sure since the last time. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Everybody can hear me okay? Good on the left, good on the right? All right. And I would ask my compatriots, please, let's hold off on the comments so we don't interrupt this running on timeline.
Jason, can I interrupt you one second? We are gonna do five minutes. Give you the five minutes, then I'll put my hand up when we're getting close, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, my fellow citizens, City Council members, and Mayor Bichensky who couldn't be here. As a historian, it has become over the years apparent to me that we as a society have a very short memory. We have become so inundated with the individual circumstances of our lives that we forget that those who do not learn from the past are destined to repeat it. We do not educate ourselves broadly in the events and martyrs of history so that we proceed through our lives without an effective and well-rounded perspective that enables us to make critical decisions that impact the direction of our lives, our community, and our country. Recently, a City Council meeting, the statement was made by a member of this council during public session. How can you judge China? While it would appear that our esteemed council member is unaware of the full scope of the actions of the Chinese Communist Party and has forgotten their history, and while I'm confident that this council member is old enough to have seen or heard about what will follow, I feel compelled to provide some historical perspective and context. Perhaps our esteemed council member is unaware of, or was just simply too young at the time to remember the Great Proletarian Cultural Revolution that lasted from 1966 until 1976. A handful of minutes spent in focused research would illuminate to them the events which occurred during this movement. Events such as Red August, which resulted in the massacre of nearly 1,800 people, the ransacking of more than 33,000 homes, and the forced expulsion of roughly 85,000 families from Beijing and its surrounding areas. The slaughter of 150,000 Chinese citizens in Guangzhou was wrought through such grisly and archaic methods such as stoning, boiling, disembowelment, flaying, and more outlandishly the use of dynamite and purposeful cannibalism. I guess they had seen soil and green. Unfortunately, the macabre theme present in these events doesn't stop with the heinous acts previously listed. The Inner Mongolia incident led to the death toll estimates that ranged from 27,000 to 100,000. The Guangdong Cultural Revolution massacre saw six counties within Guangdong reporting a combined total of over 10,000 deaths, and the Yunnan Cultural Revolution massacre reporting a combined total of over 10,000 deaths with, excuse me, within Guangdong. And the Yunnan Cultural Revolution massacre and the massacre in Hunan Province saw almost 20,000 and 10,000 people killed respectively. But how can we judge China? The aforementioned topics don't need to begin to touch on the efforts to purge the country of leading intellectual minds, educators, and local and state-level civic leaders, such as the Five Black Categories, the Stinking Old Ninth, and the Down-to-the-Countryside and Social Education Movements, an all-too-common theme amongst emerging and established authoritarian regimes. Thirteen years following these events, and even after an admission by those who came to power after Chairman Mao passed, that the Cultural Revolution was a misstep, the world watched as Tiananmen Square protests and massacre erupted and watched the Chinese Communist Party's People Liberation Army crush the student-led demonstrations with deaths ranging from several hundred to several thousand. Looks like it wasn't enough of a misstep for the CCP to keep from slipping back into their old ways. But I remove the discussion from these abhorrent events and those struggles of Tibet, the treatment of the Uighurs, and the present saber rattling over Taiwan, to a less grim and violent discussion, and encourage your intense scrutiny at the decades-long theft of U.S. and international intellectual property. And one merely need to look to Africa and observe their practice of financing third-world countries' endeavors to modernize and bolster their own economy through infrastructure upgrades who have been unable to stay current on their debts, resulting in the possession and control of said infrastructure by the CCP and their state-owned and run banks. A relatively recent article from CBS News described a years-long malicious cyber operation led by a Chinese state-sponsored actor known as APT-41, which siphoned off from roughly 30 multinational companies within manufacturing, energy, and pharmaceutical sectors, an amount of intellectual property that estimated to be worth in trillions. A recently unearthed malicious campaign, which has been dubbed Operation Cuckoo Bees, which despite its humorous name, has been exfiltrating hundreds of gigabytes of intellectual property and sensitive data ranging from defense blueprints and diagrams for sophisticated military equipment and vehicles, to formulas for medicine and proprietary manufacturing-related data from companies in North America, Europe, and Asia as well. How can we judge China? I ask more pointedly, how can we not? Now let me set the record straight. In this judgment of Communist China, let me leave no room to mince words upon my meaning. When I ask how can we not judge China, it is not the average citizen who goes to work every day and tries to provide for their families and their children to which I refer. It is squarely aimed at the Chinese Communist Party and the iron fist with which they govern their people and work behind the scenes in the manner that they do to gain footholds in territory, both literally and figuratively. Admittedly, in the spirit of fairness, we here in the United States have had our own struggles with internal strife and poor practices, but one thing we have done is work actively to improve upon ourselves as a nation by learning from our mistakes of our past and doing our best to not repeat them. I wonder if the Uighur people can make the same statement about Chinese Communist Party. I do not envy you who sit on this council during this time of upheaval and disagreement within our community. You and the citizens of this city as well find yourselves in a situation which no city council should find itself in. And I hold no malice towards you for wanting to do what you felt was the best by citizens of this city. You yourselves are victims in this, that you have fallen prey of the CCP's efforts to further progress their 100-year plan by working at the local level to avoid pitfalls of foreign investment laws and gain local political influence in order to accomplish this. You are experiencing firsthand the subversive methods by which they conduct business, skirt tariffs, and the ways they gain a foothold in regions of the world. What I cannot abide, though, is the at-best willful ignorance of people engaged in pursuing this endeavor and the willful play at words and meanings of those with whom you have spoken to further push the agenda in a direction that favors the outcome you seek. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Mr. Coachman?
I'm gonna give this to you. Well, City Council, it's good to see everybody here tonight. What I gave you is a piece of paper because I started seeing a pattern, not just in our city, our county, in our state, but also our nation. I see it on different levels as far as our freedom, as it talks about here, the three principles, you know, taking God out of school, as you heard what's going on, North Dakota's starting to become very well-known. The political, and as I listen to all the things that is being said here, we're losing one of the most fundamental things, and that's the freedom of speech. We have an inherent right to have the opportunity to speak. And as I listened to this City Council meeting last week and all the things that are coming out, I see it slowly erode. You see it in the schools where Homeland and all these FBI's are starting raiding different places, saying, hey, look, you're a domestic character, if you stand up to do your rights. Just a couple hours ago, my friend, who had a bunch of petitions that went through the state, BCI raided his house because he wanted to put something on the ballot. And I'm starting to see things start to erode here in the lower level, which is quite frightening. And so, last couple weeks ago, I emailed almost all the City Council and only got a response back from two. So, I'm gonna come to a conclusion here. He goes, and I sent this to everybody, says, "I have stated in August 1st City Council meeting, and I believe as a city, we can accomplish great things here in Grand Forks. How? By working together and getting questions answered to remove doubt, fears, and concerns. And willing to work with you to help move these to city forward to a bigger and brighter future if you give me an opportunity to. Would you recommend me a place on the agenda so we as a city can help? Like I said at the City Council meeting, I will give the PowerPoint presentation to you three to five days before the meeting, so we have an opportunity for you to ask me questions and I give my name." I get a response just from actually two people, but from Ms. Sandy. He's a homie, Mr. Coachman. I wish he was here tonight because I would like to ask him this question and he can send it to me. Says, "Thank you for taking the time to email me. I will not recommend you putting you on the agenda, and you already know why. However, I agree that people should have their questions answered and appreciate your willingness to work with us to help move the city forward to a bigger and brighter future. So please, send us the PowerPoint presentation with questions you have gathered so we can get the answer to the questions to the public. If you're a man of your word and are simple trying to get the questions answered, you have sent us the questions. Let us work together and get the questions answered to remove doubt, fear, and concern. All the best, Dana." Well, there's a couple things. One, I don't know why. As you see here that I just gave to you, the U.S. Constitution protects the freedom of speech. I have the right to speak. And this is going down to the North Dakota Century Co., and I think you're a good job on bringing a lot of the constitutional rights last week. Says, "All political powers inherit of the people, not the council, not the government, the people. And such is for every man may freely write, speak, and publish his opinion in all civic, be responsible for the abuse of that approach." It's pretty much that. He's gonna be responsible for what he says, but he can't say what he wants. And on the fact, I have a young man here at a school board dealing with the same thing in another state. in another state.
And I will caution you, I will caution you, solicitor. There is a video camera to my left. If you edit this tape, then you're going to have a big legal problem on your hands because my right to critique your fascism, which is what this is, is constitutionally protected. There are emails, public record emails, in which the Director of Equity is lobbying and advocating for public comment to be censored in this school district. And you know what? You know what? Lobbying for it, advocating for it. We've got the school board president saying she'll do better at hitting the mute button in blatant violation of the Constitution for her lobbying and her advocacy of unconstitutional censorship. I want you, the school board, to terminate the employment of Dr. Teresa Gibson with immediate effect.
Where have we heard already about hitting the mute button? No difference. And one of the things that is really upsetting is because we don't know where you guys are. So when we ask questions, we're looking for feedback because actions speak louder than words. So when the people ask, are you gonna stand for the United States or sit for China? Your actions speak. And I'm asking, are you gonna stand for the Constitution or are you gonna sit with Tony? Are you gonna be any different than this other school board? When you talk about we're the most liberal country or our city, but you're putting pressure on us like there's no tomorrow. You're taking away our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. Ms. Carlson?
I was thinking about what to say tonight, but I feel like what we say falls on deaf ears, so I kind of revised what I wanted to share with you tonight. A question, I know this is a comment session, but a question is, is that $5 million letter of credit ready to go? Do we have access to that if Hu Feng pulls out tomorrow?
I'm not positive. I would probably defer to Mr. Gostad on that.
Letter of credit's been signed, and we have the original in the finance department.
So we don't know if it's ready to go, if they leave tomorrow?
The letter of credit's been signed by the bank. The original's held with the finance department.
Okay, okay. It does indicate in the development agreement that that is to be ready to go on February 22nd. So I appreciate that it's a few months late, but it's ready to go. This is my flag. This is who I pledge my allegiance to. This is my loyalty. I'm ashamed that none of you stood when you were asked to last week, stand for America or sit for China, and you all took a knee, except for Ms. Lusowski. Thank you very much. That meant a lot to us, that you had the courage to do that, and I appreciate that. Thank you. As Mr. Coachman indicated, we have innate rights, and we are the people. You were elected to represent us, and you have forgotten, you have forgotten the people. You move ahead with projects, even as an example here tonight, something that you voted on that impacts all of the people in this community, the ability to stand up before you and to say what we want to say. Victimany of the whole met last Monday. You discussed about, you know, how you wanted to proceed with this five minutes and moving things up and had that discussion and decided how it was best that you move forward. You bring it up here, you vote on it. When was there any citizen input on that? And that's a rhetorical question, I'm not asking you to answer it, but when did you involve the citizens? Where were the ward meetings with Hu Feng? You know, again, as was mentioned earlier, answering questions, you know, you give this as a comment session, but you don't answer questions. We have a lot of questions that are not answered. When and where can we go to get those answered? I did want to talk about something new tonight, other than Hu Feng. When I talk about innate rights, one of those is my freedom of speech, okay? Quoting the Declaration of Independence is not a riddle. It's nothing that deserves a visit from the Grand Forks Police Department nor the ever-elusive I have made many, many, many calls. I made a call today again to Bismarck, who I've been directed by Chief Nelson to contact Bismarck since apparently the FBI person works, according to the police department, according to their own volition, and the police department is not responsible for anything that the FBI does. I wish Mr. Botinsky were here because he is one that has been included in the emails that have gone back and forth between Johnson, Chief Nelson, Lieutenant Stein. This incident happened to me on June 30th. June 30th. I filed a complaint with the police department that they would have gotten on the 5th of July after the 4th of July holiday. The investigation is still not complete. Okay? What I have been told, and I have had multiple meetings, my husband and I have had multiple meetings with the police department, and we get the response that Sergeant Jennings acted on his own, he randomly came across my post and took it upon himself to visit my house. So how did the FBI get involved? Why does it take so long? Chief Nelson? Mr. Phelan, you're also included in those emails. I'm not sure what your role is in it because it does say in city code that the supervisor of the chief of police is the mayor. And Jason, you have that number on that, and I just looked it up. It's five point something in the city code, that the mayor is the one that supervises the chief of police, not Mr. Phelan. So that needs to get straightened out. Chief Nelson, I want answers. Thank you.
Councilmember Weil, Chief Nelson has responded that in the near term there'll be an investigation completion and the information will be shared with the public.
Thank you. John, I think you may have just went to use the restroom quick. Mr. Spicer?
Good evening, everybody, council. Let's start off with a couple of things that we've tried to make some connections to. I'll direct this to Ms. Lunskey. Kind of doing a little investigation about your husband's business. I've kind of set in the tone for if there's another conflict of interest because we've had them before. Probably not the right place to ask you, but I think this project and your husband's business being connected to a lot of the city avenues and procedures, would you honestly say that there's no connection, that this would influence you with your husband and his business, that would affect you as a council member?
I can honestly say no.
Excuse me, I'm not done, sorry. Would there be a possibility that he would even be connected to a contract to redo the sound system in the council chambers? I'll let you answer.
Is he in a contract? He is not in a contract to redo the council chambers. There has been talk of that, but no.
Okay. Is he connected with the city at all as far as doing business with the city?
Yeah, we do business with everyone.
Does he do work for the L.A. Center?
Yes.
Many times?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know. I would just let you think about it, that there's a possibility that you should maybe bow out of the voting because of your connections with the city.
I guess that's up to Mr. Gostad.
Well, and that's why I bring it up.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move on. On the way to the meeting, on the way to a lot of these meetings, I listened to the radio, and over and over, I hear advertisements from serious aircraft, advertising for employees. Okay? As I process this whole thing for six or seven months, and I look at what the council proceeds to be one of the biggest things there is to push it, is jobs. And we're looking at 233 jobs, permanent jobs, that you can talk about the wages and, you know, the high end and the low end and what it's gonna bring, okay? I still don't believe, and I don't know how you believe, that we are gonna actually fill these jobs with people that are in this community, which is who we're concerned about mostly, right? The people that you should represent, which I have a hard time believing in that. I don't know where they're gonna come from, but I'm a little nervous about when they do come to fill these positions. So the next thing I hear, okay, is that around our country, China is on a move, the CCP is on a move, okay? And you can't be oblivious to this. It's all over. It's everywhere. They are buying thousands of acres of property, okay? So do we not connect the dots and see the fact that maybe they are getting ready to invade us with as much powerful dollar bills and set into our community to buy people off and do whatever it is it takes to plant themselves in our country?
No.
I don't know how you cannot notice that. Now, 13 people that I know of that are connected with the Innovation Center, who are all Chinese descent, I've seen them at different places in town, and I've also seen them at ICS, where the equipment that's gonna be built out there is stationed. And I've seen multiple people out there that are, they're not Grand Forks people. Are these people gonna be the ones that are working for this company? Because they're here for a reason. I've seen them at the Innovation Center, I have pictures of them, so I'd like to know how involved they are. Okay? Now, I talked to the mayor on the radio Friday, and I asked him the question about why Kevin, who's the Asian guy that's been, you're the Chinese kid, I just know him by his first name, and Mr. Tudorash have not been to any of these meetings, okay? If you or I or somebody else was gonna sell this huge, huge facility that's gonna make us all this money, I would be here at every meeting and I would be selling this thing like Mr. Phelan does, because he's the best salesman in the room, I know that, because I've witnessed it, and he does a good job, okay? I don't believe a word he says, but he's a hell of a salesman. Okay? So that's where I'm coming from for that. Now, the other thing I have to say is that repeatedly we have asked you to support the people that signed the petitions, and instead, you embarrassed them, you harassed them, and you did whatever, and Jody's one of them. Okay? That process just goes to show that you have no respect for the people in this town. I still beg you to make a motion. Somebody up there, let's just get ahead of this. Somebody make a motion and say, let's give these people the vote. I don't care what argument you say that we can't, we're setting precedent, we're doing this, we're doing that. I don't care about that. You have the power. You could do that with one slice of the gavel, but you won't do it. Nobody will step up. I would commend whoever it would be to do it, just like I commend Rebecca for standing, okay? That's an insult to this town and to this country that you people didn't stand. I don't know how you can do that, and all you had to do was stand. It wasn't like a major, as Mr. Botinsky said, it was a stunt to ask you to stand. I don't think it's a stunt when somebody asks you to stand and represent your country. If that's a stunt, we're all in trouble. So I'll leave you with this. Support the country you live in or live in the country you support, and maybe, just maybe, you should stand the next time somebody asks you to stand for your country.
John?
Mr. Botinsky, you look a little different. I know this has been hard on everybody, but dang.
Much younger and better-looking, right?
I don't know, man, his cheekbones are a little bit more, you know, defined.
I hear you. Works out more than I do.
Please let me know when that passed my five minutes, if you wouldn't mind. You know, four months ago, I didn't actually know what my opinion of the Fu Feng cornmill was. I make videos for a living, I take photos for a living, and I like to support local restaurants, it's sort of my little thing. I actually kidnapped Mayor Botinsky before, it was cool to take him over to the Blue Moose for a video promoting local restaurants. So I decided to make a little documentary about the whole controversy, and interviewed some people behind me, and I interviewed some people who would have been in front of me if, you know, you were not you, but it's okay. At the time, I could have gone either way, but I think, after looking into everything, I no longer have any doubts that you can't stop this project. This project is important. And furthermore, I think the important thing is that all of you didn't stand last week or two weeks ago, and here's why. You were given the choice, and the words were very precisely, "Show that you're going to stand for your country and kill this project or sit for Communist China."
Twisting words.
I'm not, you're the one twisting words, sir. That's exactly what the tape said, I watched it eight times. Eight times. Every single time, it was a heads I win, tails you lose. You know, it's funny, five years ago, I attended the baptism of one of my Chinese students. For four years, I taught high school in Virginia, and 10% of my class every year was students whose parents had saved money and sent them to school in the United States. It was the first time they'd ever heard that they had a God-given dignity. And I attended their baptisms, and I heard the stories about their life in China and how they... I had a student who attempted suicide at the age of four, under the academic pressure in China. And I don't raise this to add to the noise going against you, I raise it to remind you, you have dignity too. You sit here quietly every week and be told again and again, you don't listen, you don't listen. listen." They do listen, they just don't obey you. You can't bully people and expect that's how a government works. Even the Supreme Court, even the Supreme Court would not tolerate the amount of screaming and just absolute insanity that has taken place at this podium. This is a huge problem. And I'm really grateful that my five minutes are being so diligently respected by the lovers of freedom behind me. This is a problem. And if I can speak as a Christian to fellow Christians, there's a little bit of a detail in the Christian Gospels we would do well to remember, as we decide who is going to speak and when we're going to speak. It's amazing to me someone can get five minutes and an earlier speaking slot and still think they're being oppressed. In the Christian Gospels, the crowd on the day of the crucifixion asks for Barabbas over Jesus. And if you know what Barabbas means, it means the son of the father. The irony of that lesson is that sometimes an angry crowd will choose what they think is just. They will choose the son of the father and reject the actual incarnate God. Every single one of you has unimaginable dignity. And if we can't conduct our city business treating each other with dignity, then I would say get rid of citizen comments. If you're just going to be berated and oppressed, you don't have to take that. And if you want to have a civilization of freedom, I would call on everyone, including myself, to remember that we are all trying to do the best we can and to treat each other as though we were worthy of infinite dignity and respect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cadlec?
It's a lot of Christianity in China.
Thank you for your time. You know, this whole thing started for me at the first meeting, and Mr. Sandy was sitting there at the time. And I told him the one thing I'd ask for is that the city would be honest and aboveboard. And that started off the whole works. There was fireworks from Sandy. And I was absolutely right. You guys have proven me right, week after week after week after week. And there was one week that I stood here and I told you that I have friends watching in Phoenix every week, watching this. And one of those friends I spoke to this morning, and he told me when he went to work for the city, there were 360 people that wanted to work, they had to take a test. That isn't the way it works today. You walk on if you take a job at the city. Mr. Spicer was correct about those ads with Cirrus. Except today, the ad I heard on Cirrus was, "They're offering a $2,000 bonus, sign-on bonus." So it must not be quite the working force you guys are imagining. And I've known from the beginning, and I think you people know, the truth of the matter is that if this plant is done, it's going to be staffed with 200 or more Chinese persons. And every one of them are going to be CCP. Because anybody that lives in China or has any connection with China is CCP. Now, I'm sure most of you people don't subscribe to magazine like this. These ones back there maybe do. Because this magazine tries very hard to be truthful and honest with everything they publish. And you know, there's an article caught my eye today when I pulled this out of the mailbox. "400 Million Cut Their Ties With The CCP In Defiance Of Communist Control." Now, these aren't people living in China, these are American citizens living in New York. Could you people cut their contact with the CCP? I'll ask you right now. If you believe in America and stand for America, stand up. If you're for the Chinese, the CCP, please stay seated. And now that shows me you're either deaf, or else you're for the CCP. And you know, if this was any other country that was not communist, there'd be no problem with this. But the problem goes way beyond this, because there are at least a dozen issues here that are not being addressed properly. And if this is ever done, it is going to be such a force of destruction, nobody's ever going to be able to pick up the pieces. Mr. Veen, I thank you for trying. You know, he should be given a lot more respect. He spent how many years in the career he's at? And he is told by people like Sandy, that spends his time working on software, that Sandy seems to know more about the water and the watershed than he does. You know, there was a very good program on 60 Minutes last night. You know, there's a problem with water in this country. Water, clean water, is one of the last important resources of this nation. Why are you willing to turn around and hand that to a communist foreign country? Taking away from your own people, one of the most important resources we have. That resource, that river, belongs not only to me, these people here, but the people in Minnesota, the people up in Canada, the people along the river. It does not belong to a foreign entity that's going to come and build a shop here. Well, they're not building the shop, you guys are, you're footing the bill. You're footing the bill for the attorneys. You know, I know over 1,000 people I've talked to, and they dislike the way our tax dollars are being wasted. And it is just being funneled away by you people on a program that the vast majority does not agree with at all. And you know, when we touch just on that water problem, when that water problem hits, and it's going to be way worse, because in the southwest, there are seven states that are having a terrible, terrible drought. There's people are going to do without water, because California's dictated they get so much. And they're not even a source of the water. And what, is my five minutes up?
Yes, you can...
Well, I am so sorry, but thank you for letting me speak, and I really, really pray that you people stop and really think of what the rest of us feel like. Thank you.[1367.91][1367.91][applause]
All right. Thank you. I am out of comic cards, we'll move on to item number seven.
7.1 is the vendor list as is presented.
Is there a motion in a second? A motion by Veen, second by Cavami. No comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item eight.
City administrator comments?
Mr. Phelan?
A handful of comments tonight, city council. I want to make note, we have two ward meetings that are coming up. The first ward meeting, the council president Sandy is having a Ward Six, and we'll do some advertising on this. He's doing a Ward Six meeting on Thursday, September 1st, at the Alara Center, at 5:00. And we've been working with Councilmember Cavami, thank you for moving ahead with the ward meeting also. We're going to do that one on Monday, August 29th, at Fire Station Number 5, probably around 5:00 too. So, the point of that is if you are interested in ward meetings, I'll certainly work with you. Work with John Bernstein, and we'll organize the right place and time and whatever you may want to discuss with that. So we do have two of them that are moving forward, and if you have any interest in us helping you organize a ward meeting, we'll certainly do that, as we kind of leap towards late summer into the fall. So we'll advertise those for you all too, so thank you for that. Also want to make an announcement, really an important announcement of, our city assessor, Paul Hodak, has announced he's going to retire here this fall. And Paul is one of our most favorite colleagues and friends that we have here, and we're going to miss him a lot. And he's going to retire later this fall. He's going to work part-time with the city of Grafton and help them with their, some software installations, just like he did here in Grand Forks over the last several years, and has done a great job. And you should know that over the, all the years that Paul has been a city assessor, at the end of the year with, when we have our tax equalization meeting, it's generally just a one or two protests, and that's from a years full of work with Paul and his team. And because of his real, true competence and his confidence and his leadership, that's what happens. And you probably, you all know this, it doesn't have to be that way. And that's kind of his professionalism. So, we're going to have Paul here for several more weeks, but we're looking forward to working with him. And I just want to let you know sooner rather than later, so that you can appreciate Paul every time you see him on Monday evenings, but we're really happy for him as he moves forward. We will move forward the process to, one of the great things that Paul did is he really got his team up and going, so that knowing that when he was going to step aside and move forward his next phase in life, that he's got a real strong team. And we'll look to transition as a part of our succession plan with that. So I just wanted to say thank you to Paul, and if we could give him a hand for all the great work he's done.[1574.01][1574.01][applause] And then finally, on a sadder note, I did send out an email, but we did have a death in our family, our city family, and his name is Jeremy Dietz. Jeremy worked for the city for about 16 years, and when I was Public Works Director, I worked with Jeremy for several years, and then as city administrator. So Jeremy, in honor of him, you know, he was a senior wastewater, stormwater collection employee for the city of Grand Forks, for our waterworks department. And what that means is that he worked in the collection system, both in our stormwater system and our wastewater system, and worked a lot on our greenway and flood protection system. So that during spring flooding, and obviously we've had more and more flooding over the years, Jeremy was a really key contributor for that. So, as we think out, coming next spring and all the things that happen, whether they're with pump station and gates and all those things, Jeremy was a huge part of that team. And he and his team, his team missed him quite a bit, and so we're going to be mindful of our city family, all the people that have worked together regarding that. So, he was, he had his funeral on Saturday, and Councilwoman Osowski was there, and I know was a personal friend of Jeremy. And Jeremy was a guy who had lots of friends, and you could see that on Saturday morning, whether he was within the city or outside, he had an easy smile, he was a great friend. And it's sad that we have to meet these kinds of events. So, Jeremy's dad was a longtime public works employee for the city of Grand Forks, with the street department over the years. So, the best part of the, one of the best parts of the funeral is that all the city family, from retired employees to current employees, that were there to pay their respects to Jeremy and his family. And it was, it was another great reason why we have such great employees and we're such a great family. So here's to Jeremy, and all the great things that he did for the city of Grand Forks, and throughout our community, and all the great friends and family that he had that showed up. So, that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We'll move on to item number nine.
Mayor and councilmember comments?
Ms. Osowski? Ms. Lunskey? Mr. Cavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Mr. Phelan, if we want to have the ward meetings, we just work, you said directly through John or through yourself?
Why don't you work with John and I, and we'll help set everything up for you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I don't have any other comments. Congratulations to Mr. Hodak in your upcoming retirement. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family of Mr. Dietz. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Weber moves we adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Same sign. This motion carries unanimously. Thank you.